The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Okelvey, Alderman Kong, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, 19 present.
A quorum being present. We will be led today in prayer by a civil rights icon, Sister Ibo.
I think that should do it. Good morning.
Good morning.
On all of your desks, you will find a sheet. In honor of Black History Month, we will pray the last stanza together. It will not be sung because some people might not know the melody. And secondly, because I want this to be inclusive of everybody, praying for the welfare of those who are here today but are living today because of the goodness and the grace and the mercy of Almighty God upon our predecessors. Let us pray. God of our weary years, I would prefer that we not pray this until I have done an introduction of myself with the Lord. And we will pray by the Spirit and not by the clock. Good and gracious God, we thank you for this time that you have allowed us to be present with our aldermen and women and also the guests who are present. We thank you for the goodness and the grace and the mercy that has made it possible for us to be together and to, in the words of our old ancestors, "Walk together, children; don't you get weary." Let it help us to walk together and to love and serve one another with a sense of purpose, a purpose that is prayerful and patient, waiting for the Lord. And help us to be united, united always in the Spirit in which we say, "Of the people, by the people, and for the people." Let it be a sense of reconciliation, forgiving as we would be forgiven. Help us, Lord, to understand and to love one another with a sense of prayer, praying always that we love and know one another as Almighty God knows each one of us and that which goes on in our hearts, that which goes on when we cast ballots, that which goes on when we speak to one another and enjoy the company of one another, but within a spirit of goodness and mercy. Help us, Lord, to know and to be the oil that is poured out and pours forth over the beard of Aaron, and justice, the spirit of justice. And help us to be a sign to the rest of the world that we are good people and we aim for goodness within our community, the kind of goodness that takes care of our children, the kind of goodness that sees that our children have good educations without having to walk the streets and find the schools and their parents leave their jobs to find what they need in order to be prepared for college. Help us, Lord, that all that we do will be that sign, that purpose, and make of us educators, and not only educators, but evangelists, carrying the good news of good and honest love for one another. And now let us turn to our prayer, verse three, the bold print on your prayer, "Lift every voice and sing." And together we will pray. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, you who have brought us thus far on the way, thou who hast by thy might led us into the light, keep us forever in the path, we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places our God where we met thee; lest our hearts drunk with the wine of the world we forget thee; shadowed beneath thy hand may we forever stand, true to our God, true to our native land." In the verse eight of Micah 6:8, we are told to walk humbly with our God. May this be your blessing and may the blessing of Almighty God, the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, abide with you in peace and love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, God bless you. And this is the presidential sheet.
Okay.
The President kissed me on that cheek and the President of St. Louis, you can kiss me on that cheek. There you go.
Sister Ibo just let me kiss her on the same cheek that Barack Obama kissed her on, so that's good. I move for adoption of our Courtesy Resolution, I maintain a second on motion, seconded by the Alderman from the 10th, Alderman from the 18th, would you like to approach the diocese?
Hey Sister, you got to hold one second. Don't go anywhere yet.
Mr. President, members of the Board, it is my pleasure to present in honor of Sister Ibo, a resolution from the Board of Aldermen. Now, she is not supposed to be aware that we're going to do this. This is a surprise to her. And the only reason why she said we shouldn't, we won't sing those verses because she knew if you did and I sing, you may not survive. Whereas Sister Antonia was born in Bloomington, Illinois, on April 10, 1924, and was raised in a Baptist church. Her mother died when she was four and she went to work with her father. At the age of six, her father sent her and her siblings to be cared for at a children's home, where she converted to Catholicism later in her childhood. And whereas in 1942, she found her place in the United States Cadet Nurse Corps at St. Mary's Infirmary in St. Louis. Soon after, in 1946, she became one of the first three African-American women to join the Sisters of Mary, now the Franciscan Sisters of Mary. In 1962, she earned a degree in Medical Records Administration and two years later, she earned her master's degree from St. Louis University. During that time, Sister Ibo became the Director of Medical Records Department at St. Mary's Hospital. She was the first African-American supervisor in charge of any department at St. Mary's. And whereas on March 10, 1965, three days following Bloody Sunday, she marched with a contingent of 15 people. And I'll read that again. She marched with a contingent of 51 people from St. Louis to Selma, Alabama, at the request of the Archdiocese of St. Louis. And as an answer to the appeal of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., they marched to demand equal rights for African-Americans. And whereas soon after Selma, Sister Ibo became the first African-American religious leader to be in charge of a Catholic hospital in this country. And in 1967, she was appointed as the Executive Director of the St. Clair Hospital in Wisconsin. And whereas Sister Ibo has earned many awards for being a trailblazer, a living legend, she has given speeches all over the country. In 1989, the National Black Sisters Conference presented her with the Harriet Tubman Award, honoring her, as some would call her, a Moses to her people. Five universities have awarded her honorary doctorates, including St. Louis University and the University of Missouri-St. Louis, in 2010. Yet throughout her life, she has lived by the expression, "Give God the glory and give her the prayers." Now therefore be resolved by this Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize and honor St. Mary, St. Sister Mary Antonia Ibo for her outstanding contributions to her city. And we further direct the clerk of this board to include a copy of this resolution in the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a copy for presentation at a time deemed appropriate by the sponsor. It is not often we have the opportunity to have a living legend before us, but we do today. And it is certainly our honor to offer her this small token in writing, an appreciation of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen, of her great and memorial work on behalf of justice in the City of St. Louis and justice in America. Now, we'll bring her up and present her this resolution. And hopefully, people have been able to be quiet and secret so she did not know. It is our honor to present this to you this day on behalf of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen for your fine work on behalf of justice in America. Thank you.
I'm not accustomed to receiving something like this for saying a prayer, but I do appreciate this honor and especially the fact that it is during Black History Month, that it means so much to me and to our people. Thank you, one and all.
Sister, before you leave, we have one more thing. We have a medal that we want to give you, the Seal of the City of St. Louis. We are, tell you, I don't know about all of you, but I am so honored to have had an opportunity to meet you. Like Alderman Kennedy said, a living legend, the trails that you've blazed, we walk on now and we think is tough. But if it had not been for people like you that have blazed these trails, that have laid the path so smooth for us, things would be more difficult now. So we are honored on behalf of my family and friends, other members of the Board of Aldermen, people across the City of St. Louis and also people across the country. Thank you for your works on behalf of justice for all.
I'm not trying to outdo the President, but please do something about the schools so that our children will be able to attend better colleges and universities around the world. We need that and we need it now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. 90 years young, Alderman from the 23rd. Sister Ibo. First off, thanks for talking to me before the meeting. You're so sweet. She's 90 years old, but I told her she shouldn't say that, but she said. And she told me that she's a five-year cancer survivor and I believe the Lord has more work for you to do here, but God bless you for all you've done. I don't know if this is in bank, but if it's not, I'd sure like to see it in bank. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 23rd. I entertain a second, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 14th and Alderwoman from the 6th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please prepare another resolution in bank.
So noted.
All right. Alderman from the 20th.
Mr. President, members of the Board, it was my pleasure, of course, to meet you, Sister. And I wanted to make sure that you knew that my name wasn't on there, not because of the prayer, but because I was not aware of it. So now my name is on there and it doesn't say what's his name. It has my name on there. So I very much appreciate your spirit today and thank you for everything that you are doing. Please pray as you have continued to do throughout your life. When you're talking about education, that is something for many of us that is a really critical thing that we are constantly working on. I have two children and we all have children throughout the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. First of all, it's an honor to be in Sister Ibo's presence. I wanted to share with you, when I met Bishop Tutu, we served on a panel together on education on the National School Board. And he asked me about a lot of people and things. He didn't ask me about the Cardinal, but he asked me had I ever met you. And I had never met you, but I knew of the Sisters' work in our communities, but I had never met you. And so I found that, you know, when they asked me about the resolution, I went back in memory and I was like, "That's the same Sister that he asked me about." So your work is known. People think about you and care about you. And I just want to personally say thank you for all the work that you have done, putting yourself on the front line, making sure that things are better for all of us for the future. And I just want to, I'm just honored. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the Boards, respectfully to Sister Ibo, I first want to say thank you. Oftentimes, we don't get to meet people who we stand on the shoulders of. When you talk about education, I'm one of the recipients of the education that you speak so fondly of and so highly of because of people like you. I am 57 years old, will be 58 April 29th, and I claim all of my age. So I am of the age that when the, when young people had to go to school that were African-Americans and they integrated, they sent a little girl with three people from the federal governments to protect her from going to school. So I remember all of that. And I, my mother moved from the South. I was born in Brownsville, Tennessee, but grew up in central Illinois because my mother did not want me to have to go to a one-room schoolhouse. She wanted me to grow up in a place that I could have an education, to be free, to be educated. And so I grew up in a place not far from Bloomington, Decatur, 40-something miles away, in which there was never segregated schools. So when you go back, when we just had one high school, it was integrated. And there were black children at the school, Stephen Decatur High School, back in the '30s. So I was fortunate. I also grew up in a place where I grew up in an integrated community. That is so special to me as I've grown and moved around the world to see what a privileged childhood I had. But that also didn't prevent me from also being exposed to other things. My family, for many years, continued to share crop in Tennessee. And so I went to visit my grandmother every year for many, many years until she moved to Decatur. And I got to see that she couldn't vote, that they made it impossible for her to vote. And my grandmother stood in line for, with me standing by her as a little girl, to try to vote. You don't appreciate those kind of things when you're a young person. But now, as an adult, I was able to get an education here in the City of St. Louis. I was, got an undergraduate degree from St. Louis University and a law degree from Washington University. First in my family to go away to, I'm a first-timer, go away to college. My mother is one of 10. I have 33 first cousins. 20 of us have advanced degrees because although I didn't have anybody to show me the way, I was in all of their business showing them the way, okay? And when they got ready to go to high school, I got in their business to tell them this is what you need to do. But I did, I do know that there are so many people that you never get to thank, that you don't know who made the way for you, who paved the way for you. And oftentimes, I hear African-Americans talk about, "I, I, I, I did this, I did this." No, you didn't. There was somebody who went before you. They are called heroes and sheros. You don't know them sometimes, okay? But they are. Now, the heroes often get pushed up. And no disrespect to all the men in the room, but the sheros are often the people that roll up their sleeves and do the work, okay? And so I am just so honored to be able to say thank you. Thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for paving the way for me. And I want to tell you this. I have picked up the gall. I've picked it up and I know that it is my responsibility not only to help my cousins and my family members, but those who are not related to me. It is my responsibility to move the ball forward. So when you tell the President that we need to do something about education in the City of St. Louis, I also agree with that. I married into a family that's Catholic. My husband and I are of different faiths and so we had to have a priest. His cousin was a black priest, so he married us. And then my Methodist minister married us. All of his family is Catholic, so I call myself part Catholic. We went through all the things to get married we have to go through. And so that was good for me. Neither one of us have ever changed our religion because we respect that people can have different religions. But I respect the Catholic faith as I do the rest of the faith and I respect the hard work that you do. And again, I want to say thank you for all that you've done and I promise you that I, Sharon Tyus, understand what you've done and that I will continue to move the ball forward for the next generation and the next generation. Thank you so much.
Alderwoman, prior to the meeting, we called her a hero. She looked at us and she said, "No, she wrote." So you are exactly right. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your time.
I want to thank all of you for your kind words and especially from hearing from the sheros in your midst. But I think what we're doing now is causing, President Reed is going to have to read a little faster. Okay.
Now, here's the, here's the in-bank copy of the resolution.
Do I have to give this back?
Yeah. Yeah, everybody wanted to be on yours, so that's a, that's a good thing. All right, thanks so much.
Thanks again.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution. Can I, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Let's give Sister one more round of applause. We'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest. Any introduction? Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest Celeste and, well, flush reader here, and Marlene, who is taking Celeste's place with the Realtors, Joe Steiger from the Police Officers Association, Al with Local 73, Keith and Jeff with the Carpenters. And that's it.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Joe covered it, but Joe Steiger from the President of the St. Louis Police Officers Association.
Okay. Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, Mr. Leroy Grant with Grant Communications.
Alderman from 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my honored guest Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office and Umo Ironbar from St. Louis University of Law School in the North Campus.
Alderman from 26.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Miss Stephanie Robertson of AMU. Thank you.
Alderman from 3rd.
Oh, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest Mavis Thompson, who is the License Collector for the City of St. Louis.
All right, welcome, License Collector. Alderman, Alderwoman from the 14th.
Good morning, Mr. President. For my special guest, I'd like to have Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73, which also makes their home in the 14th ward.
Alderwoman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guest today, Mr. Anthony Lancia from the AGC and David Holmes with the Plumbers and Pike Fitters.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize, Alderman from the 10th, would you like to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. As we are gathered here on the eve of Mardi Gras festivities, February 28th, this is National Sleep in Public Day, or as the staff calls it around here, another day with Joe Vaccaro. But I am pleased to actually have a guest with me today. Today, in 1827, the first commercial railroad in the United States opened up carrying both freight and passengers, the B&amp;O Railroad. And on that day in 1827, I'm happy to have the first passenger who rode on the railroad, Mr. Fred Steffen.
Alderman, Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
I don't really know how to respond, how I can follow up on that, but I would like that we approve the minutes from the... What if I would have said February the 13th meeting instead of February? It was the February the 14th meeting of the Board of Aldermen.
It's been moved by Alderman from 17th, I entertain a second, seconded by Alderman from 25th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. We also have with us Gia, Tricia, and Heather. Could you guys stand up? They're from, they're with the American Toxicology Institute and they provided breakfast this morning for members of the Board. If you guys have an opportunity during the course of the meeting, say hi to them. They are doing some great work throughout our community. Thanks so much for joining us today. And I don't know if they're still upstairs, but Ursula in Academy has joined us also and then they have a French exchange student. I think they have left. But we appreciate them joining us also today. Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with items eight through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 320, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordered, recommended, and approved by the Airport Commission. The Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing supplemental appropriations set apart in the total amount of $4 million from the Airport Revenue Fund into the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013 and ending June 30, 2014 for the current expenses of the government and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 321, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordered, recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the 2014 St. Louis Works and 50/50 Sidewalk Program citywide appropriating $5,500,000 from the Street Improvement Fund and a public work emergency clause. thousand dollars from the Street Improvement Fund and a public work emergency clause. Board Bill Three Twenty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate public surface rights in the East West Alley and City Block Nine Thirty-Eight, bounded by Delmar, Twenty-First Street, Lucas, and Twenty-Second Street in the city. Board Bill Three Twenty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Fifty-One Thirty-Five Shaw, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Twenty-Four, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Forty-Nine Thirty-Six through Thirty-Eight Odell, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Twenty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Forty, Four Forty-Four Odell, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Twenty-Six, sponsored by Alderman Young, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Twenty-Four Twenty-Two through Twenty-Four South Eleventh Street, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Twenty-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Twenty-Eight Forty-One through Forty-Seven Indiana, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Twenty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Young, President Reed, Alderman Davis, and Alderman Cruzen, and ordered as authorizing and directing the execution of a festival reservation agreement between the city and Summer Rocks LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, which agreement reserves during Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends a portion of Gateway Mall and certain street rights of way adjacent to Gateway Mall to Summer Rocks for the conduct, conduct of music festivals for up to twenty years. Board Bill Three Twenty-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the East West Alley and City Block Forty-Five Ninety-One West, bounded by Oakland, Oakview Place, Berthole, Hampton, and Clayton in the city. Board Bill Three Thirty, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for travel on the southernmost fifteen-foot wide north-south alley in City Block Five Seven Six, bounded by Cass, Ten, O'Fallon, and Tucker, Tucker Street, and number two, the excess portion of Thirteenth and Tucker, abutting City Block Five Seven Six in the city. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill Three Twenty. To the Convention and Tourism Committee, Board Bill Three Twenty-Eight. To the Housing Committee, Board Bill Three Twenty-Four and Three Twenty-Six. To the Streets Committee, Board Bills Three Twenty-One, Three Twenty-Two, Three Twenty-Nine, and Three Thirty. To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills Three Twenty-Three, Three Twenty-Five, and Three Twenty-Seven. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill Two Seven Six, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, and ordered as authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into agreements with the Transdisciplinary Center in, on Health Equity Policy Research and Practice funded by the National Institute of Health, National Institute on Minority Health and Health Disparities for the St. Louis Collaborative Action for Child Equity Project. Board Bill Three Fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of amendment order six-nine-four-three-two, commonly referred to as City-St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Thirteen through Two Thousand and Fourteen, appropriating projected excess-led remediation fund revenue to address certain expenditures for the Building Division-led remediation program for the current fiscal year in the amount of two hundred nine thousand five hundred dollars, and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill Two Nine Two, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Etzel Place Five Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two Nine Four, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Forty-Six Sixteen through Thirty, and Forty-eight Hundred through Forty-eight O-Two North Broadway, and Four, and Two-O-One through Two-O-Nine East Grand Redevelopment Area. Board Bill Three O Eight, sponsored by Alderman Howard, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Graboyes Area, Graboyes Avenue and Merrimack Street Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordered as adopting and approving a redevelopment project for a redevelopment project area number five, redevelopment project area number seven, as described in St. Louis Innovation District Tax Increment Financing, TIF redevelopment plan, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordered as approving execution of a Second Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the City of St. Louis and St. Louis Innovation District LLC, prescribing the form and details of said amendment, authorizing certain actions by city officials, and containing a severability clause. The following, and Board Bill Two, Three Nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordered as authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of one or more Series Tax Increment Revenue Notes for St. Louis Innovation District, RPA Seven Project, Series A and Series B, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed thirty-seven million one hundred thousand dollars plus issuance costs for certain reimbursable redevelopment project costs associated with Redevelopment Project Area Seven, and containing a severability clause. The following Bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill Two Eight Eight, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on Second Street between Mound and Melanphy, between Mound and Melanphy in the city. Board Bill Three Thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on a portion of Kemper, beginning west of Hereford, and continuing to a point previously vacated by order six-eight-five-four-four in the city. The following Bill was put out of Public Safety Committee. Board Bill Three Eleven, sponsored by Alderman Young, and ordered as authorizing and directing the Chief of Police, on behalf of the Mayor and the city, to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to fund the two thousand and thirteen Port Security Grant Program, and containing an emergency clause. The following Bills were reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bill Two Nine Three, sponsored by Alderman Florida, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-eight Seventy Humphrey Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three O One, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-Fifteen Indiana Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three O Two, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Nineteen Forty-One Cherokee Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three O Three, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-three Hundred Illinois Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three O Four, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-nine Forty-nine Castleman Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three O Five, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-four Thirty Hartford Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three O Six, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-eight Forty-six Botanical Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three O Seven, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-four Eleven Wyoming Air, Redevelopment Area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Three Twelve, sponsored by Alderman Ballmer, and ordered as approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Fifty-seven O Seven through Fifteen, and Fifty-seven Twenty-five through Twenty-seven Park Ridge Way, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of second reading.
We also have with us our Public Safety Director, Richard Gray. Thanks for joining us today. Thanks for joining. Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill Three Ten, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordered as authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of, and in consideration of sum of five hundred dollars, a quick claim deed to remind, releasing forever, quick claim to S. LLC Real Estate LLC, a certain city-owned parcel located in City Block Thirty-nine Fifty-three, Farmerly City Block Twenty-five Eighty-five. Board Bill Two Seven Four, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and President Reed, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Public Service, authorizing and directing the president of the Board of Public Service to enter into a cooperative agreement by and between Metropolitan Park and Recreation District, doing business as Great Rivers Greenway District for a project called Bike-St. Louis Phase Three. Board Bill Two Nine Five, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the First Amendment to the Fuel System Lease and Use Agreement between the city and STL Fuel Company LLC, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Nine Six, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as recommended by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute agreement and the contract of sale between St. Louis, the owner and operator of Lambert Airport, and Memorial Tabernacle Baptist Church, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into and execute the quick claim deed, the purchase price of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Nine Seven, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to accept and execute certain airport aid agreement offered by the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the design of new west cargo ramp at the airport for a maximum obligation of three hundred and sixty-five thousand sixty-eight dollars, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Nine Eight, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute Lambert Airport Ground Transportation Concession Agreement, AL Three Twenty-Two, between the City and Best Transportation Incorporated, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Nine Nine, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Second Amendment to the East Terminal Agency Agreement at Lambert-St. Louis Airport between the City and Airport Terminal Services Incorporated, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, motion carries. Dispense with line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bills Two Seven Three, Three Hundred, Two Eight Nine, Two Twenty-Six, and Two Thirty-Five.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Ballmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Moore, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Cruzen, twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the seventeenth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. The dispensal line item eighteen, report, report of enrollment.
Board Bills Two Seven Three, Three Hundred, Two Eight Nine, Two Twenty-Six, and Two Thirty-Five.
All other business being suspended, President shall an open session fix his signature heretofore, then that these may become lawful. First reading resolutions.
Resolution Two Thirty-Five, sponsored by President Reed. The Board of Aldermen opposed so-called right-to-work proposal that would harm Missouri's families and threaten the livelihoods of working men and women.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on first reading resolution number two-three-five.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
I move for adoption of Resolution Two Thirty-Five.
It's been moved, moved by Alderman from the, from the sixth, seconded by the Alderman from the twelfth. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that House Bill Sixteen Seventeen and House Bill Ten Fifty-Three place an onerous administrative burden on unions and their members, and is meant to weaken the strength of unions, both in the workplace and the democratic election process.
All the one from the fourteenth.
I would like to move that we pass this in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by Alderman from the fifteenth. All in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, prepare a new copy of Resolution Number Two Thirty-Five in bank.
So noted.
Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, for introducing this resolution. This right-to-work legislation is really a race to the bottom, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Alderman from the sixteenth.
President, I just wanted to make a statement that when I was a little girl growing up, my uncles, who were all union men, used to sit in the family room, and they would discuss what it was like during the Depression. And if you want to know what right-to-work is, this is what right-to-work is. During the Depression, they would stand at Union and Natural Bridge, and the trucks would pull up, and they'd say, "Get in this line if you work for a dollar a day." And then they'd say, "Okay, move over here. Get in this line if you work for fifty cents a day." And then they'd move over here, and they'd say, "Get in this line if you work for twenty-five cents a day." So if you want to know what right-to-work is, that's right-to-work.
Oh, thank you, Alderman. Very well put. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twentieth.
Mr. President, members of the board, some of us remember, at least we were told by others, about the legislation that was on the ballot previously, I think back in the late seventies, about right-to-work. And so we all understood that. We understood that it really wasn't about giving people a choice, it was about impacting not only people who are union members, but also non-union members as well, because this impacts us all. But in addition to that, there's some deception going on out there, because they're calling things like this. We saw this really slick ad, media ad, in terms of workplace fairness, and other terms like that, where they're flying the flag and talking about people having all these great choices, and bringing up their families, and, you know, mother and apple pie and all the rest of it. So I think it's going to be critical for all of us to make sure that not only are we talking about the fact that this may appear on the ballot about right-to-work, but there may be other terms. So it may be wolves in sheep's clothing that are used about things like workplace fairness. We all support workplace fairness, but if that appears on the ballot, we need to make sure people understand that that's the same thing as right-to-work, and it will not have rights for anybody, and it will not allow them to have good conditions in the workplace or decent wages to raise their families.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I stand in support of this resolution because through the years, this country has not been what it should have been. If it was not for the unions, we wouldn't have safe workplaces, and many other things that make it possible for folks to have a good quality of life. I'm a former union member. I was a steward in CWA Six Thirty. I specialize in ocean policy and guidelines, so I know what it means to have a safe workplace. When I walk through a building, I don't care where it is, I'm looking for what's wrong, because it needs to be right. And because of unions, many things are right, and I don't know what's going on in Jefferson City, but we need a big old push broom. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We will, we will have a big fight coming up in Missouri here with the right-to-work. The opponents are, you know, just pulling in tons of money to run ads and, and be very creative, calling it freedom to work. Well, we, we all know that's above that. We, we already have freedom and the right to work. It's just going out and finding, and you can find jobs. A good example of right-to-work is the meat, union meat cutter that I read in the Labor Tribune, that went down south, eighteen years experience, and the top pay there was ten dollars as a meat cutter. Place is very filthy, and it's an unsafe environment. He, you know, made- He, you know, made a couple complaints about it, the answer told to him was, if you don't like it, you can quit, this is the way we run things down here. You know, Missouri and a lot of states were built by union workers, very good jobs, I mean, you know, we pay for what we get, you know, you can always go to the lowest bidder and think you're going to save money, you don't save money with low bidders either, you know, you pay for what you get, so when you, we bid jobs, our city bid jobs, I wish they'd look a little more closer at bidding for the price of the work they're going to get. But it is very important, if Missouri loses the right of work, we will have taken about 30 steps backward, and we'll, we'll never recover from it, so it's our responsibility to educate our families and friends and our neighbors, and for them to pass it on what the right-to-work is.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 6th, you recognize to close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved, and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 235. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
With the dispensal line item 22, Ms. Lang is unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, Legislation Committee meeting, 3:00 p.m. in the leisure room. Tuesday, Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. Thursday, Convention and Tourism Committee meeting, 11:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Also on Thursday, Streets Committee meeting, 12:00 noon, that's 12:00 noon on Thursday. Friday, Full Board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers, that's the extent of my announcement.
Alderwoman from the 14th.
I would like to announce that March 1st, along with it being the celebration of Mardi Gras, it is also National Bosnian Independence Day, where the Bosnians freed themselves from the control of the Republic of Yugoslavia, and I would like to wish all the Bosnians living in the St. Louis area, Happy Independence Day.
Yeah, thank you, Happy Independence Day to all the Bosnians. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we excuse the Alderman from the 4th, the 8th, and the 28th.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we adjourn until next Friday's meeting on March the 7th.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand adjourned.